We will have them for you, it's just gonna be a while.
To my knowledge, doesn't necessarily mean a whole.
I believe we did, last time we convened, I think we were at least two months.
Yeah, there's two meetings, I think, that have to be put together.
Dominic? So, moving on to the first and conforming appeal today, which is appeal number 840. The applicant's name is Dominic Cabalno. An area variance. He requests his applicant to request an area variance construction of 14 foot by 14 foot shed in the side setback of the property 159 Redmond Road. The applicant is located within a one and two family residential R2 district, and a side setback distance of 15 feet is required. The request is for a 10 foot side setback required, fighting with the need of the required setback. Are you, Mr. Cabalno?
Yes.
Can you tell us a little bit about what you're planning to do?
Looking to install a shed on the side yard. On the side yard, it is kind of close where the part of the building's structure is, and I'm just looking to get a little bit more room between shed that I'm going to put in and the house structure case, and get to the back with trucks or whatever for the swimming pool back there and some large things out there. Just not feel more comfortable having the 20 foot space between the house and the shed proposing to put in.
He had a survey with the application, I think you saw that, of Steve's survey of his entire lot. And I also gave you an aerial photograph. Two versions in the staff notes, one was kind of zoomed in. And if you look at the zoomed in version, he's looking at the area in front of those two cars that are sitting there in the driveway in the photograph. That's the side area that he's looking to install the shed.
And the shed would go between the house and the...
And the, yeah, see the white car next to, in the shadow of the building? It's essentially right next to that white car in that area, right in there. Because I went out and saw this, when was I out there? Was it November, I think?
Yes.
He asked me to come out, so I went out and looked at it then. And we discussed the idea of maybe putting it in a compliant location, but it is, you know, he feels it's too tight for, you know, maintenance of his house and so on, so he wanted to really go for the variance.
And this aerial picture that you showed, this house is very, very close to the line, isn't it?
Yeah, that's a non-conforming house, it's just in non-conformity. Yeah, I mean, I think they're right on the property.
But the shed wouldn't be up against that house, would it?
No, there'd still be 10 feet.
Well, 10 feet, yeah.
There'd still be 10 feet of separation between the boundary line, the side yard boundary line, and the eve of the shed.
But that's not what I'm asking about, I'm only asking, the shed isn't going to be up next to your neighbor's house, it's going to be next to yours, by the way.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, it'll be back further, yeah.
Oh yeah, I see what you mean, it won't, that neighboring house is very close to the road, or closer to the road, I think the shed will be pushed back.
That's bad, it's going to be back more towards your house.
Yes, yes, I worry that it's right against that house.
Yeah, no, I see your point, yeah, I see your point.
Now, it's true that we still in areas where the lot's 100 foot wide, with a lot of houses around here now, that we still stick to the 10 foot setback?
Yes, and they are one predominantly, because those tend to be smaller lots, and they just, you know, there's less area.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, that was the way it was, when those lots were approved as 100 foot wide, the setback was 10. So, in those areas, we still have a 10 foot setback.
That's correct.
I mean, I just use them for pointers, right?
Yeah.
Because there are areas in the town that is perfectly legal, that have a head of it, so you have to pencil out the line.
Yes. Joe Patrick, that, Joe Patrick did that, and I carry that forward as well.
I have a question. I usually try to get out and look at these, and I apologize, I didn't. Is, there's just no other place on the property that you can put it, practically speaking? Is that the idea?
Yes, yes, yes.
So, these trees that we've seen are in a way, they come back from, yeah, you want to have more distance away from the house, so that you can have access to, if something comes up, you have to track it back there.
Exactly.
You'll be able to grab that, except I think it's unreasonable for that.
Yes.
It's just, what is it, in that, because I can't tell.
Yes.
And it is gradually sloping up, Justin, from the road. And then, and then I think it gets a little steeper as you go farther up the...
Yes, it does. So, it would require excavation and a lot of tree work?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
In terms of alternatives, you've got a lot of variance, why do you want the shed right there?
The other side of the house and stuff has the, there's a drywall septic and the bleach field and stuff, so I really don't like putting stuff over there. This area is, you know, closer to the driveway as far as having better access to the shed. You know, I'm looking to put some of my snow removal equipment in that shed. I don't want it, you know, up against the driveway right now, because when I use a snow blower to blow the snow, because, you know, I don't want to blow it over into my neighbor's yard, so I blow a lot of the snow up, and when you do that, in the years that we've had a lot of snow, I mean, I've had, you know, very, very high snowbanks just along the driveway. So, you know, I wanted to set it back, just so that wouldn't, you know, be a problem issue for me as far as, you know, kind of bearing the shed with snow.
Oh, I have a question, based on the location, it's kind of, the way the survey was coming, they have a 1913 tenant, which seems to propose, the other one shows a 1413 15. So, am I understanding correctly that if you were to keep and maintain the setback at 15 feet, you would still have 14 foot from the end of your house to the end of this?
That is correct.
So, you couldn't fit it in there, and realistically, you could easily go over 15 foot, you're all.
I, yeah, I would just rather have the extra five feet, just for, you know, I guess peace of mind, and, you know, as things are unpredictable as far as, you know, getting access to the backyard, let's say, where the pool and stuff is. I mean, just, you know, would think having that extra five feet would, you know, more of a cushion?
I understand, I mean, we're beyond the R2 district, and you're 15 foot setback, right?
That is correct.
There's also that concern, we could change this for the life of this property, we could change that setback one. So, again, 14 foot, I mean, it's ample to get it in the driveway, it's ample for other equipment and stuff. Not there, it's not a full setback, it's 14 foot wide, it's wide enough, right?
Yeah, it's, you know, it's, you know, it's on a kind of incline a little bit, and...
But if you were to get a truck in the back, it could clearly go through that space. 14 foot, you get a truck in the backyard, right? Vehicles are 10 foot wide, 14 foot can't take them, right?
Yes.
Then, of course, if you don't need a 14 by 14 shed, it could be 12 by 18, 10 by 25. You could also change the shape of the shed, right? So, there is a practical, we need to do some practical things, take care of all your concerns, and still maintain the R2 district, and maintain the setback, right? I'm asking about three ideas in three minutes, oh, there's definitely some practical solutions here. I don't know, I guess, what would prevent you from doing one of those alternative ideas that I just brought up?
The, on the application, it does list that as a 12 by 16, with one foot of stone on each side of the foundation of the shed. And so, you know, to leave that, I would put 14 in there. So, that would, you know, reduce that by another foot, I guess.
But I guess the question is, why not, why not move it?
The shed?
Yeah.
Well, to be honest, I mean, I have already purchased the shed. The shed is, you know, waiting at the shed facility. I did not realize until after doing more research as far as the setbacks were. So, I mean, you know, that is my fault, that's definitely my fault, I just, I didn't, I guess, I didn't realize that it would be 15 feet away from the fence. I was just very surprised that it was, you know, that much. I mean, because, you know, you look in other areas in the area, and you see a lot of sheds and stuff, you know, closer to the fence, to the property line. So, I mean, you know, I wanted to, you know, do it correctly, because I didn't know what the consequences would be if, you know, I just put it in, and then I, whenever they did a house assessment or a property assessment, they would notice that, and I didn't know whether they would, you know, enforce me or have me move it, that's why, you know...
A better altitude to do it, just for...
Yes, so, you know, that is my fault for not checking into it beforehand.
Sounds fair, I'll just be pretty sure. So, you've already had a lot to check, to check.
That is correct.
Existence, essentially.
I just didn't realize that the setback was that, that great.
It's a shame, but it's significant, I think it's...
So, if I'm hearing what you're saying about, so, when you were doing this figure, you're going to have a foot of stone around it?
That's correct.
So, was the measurement that you were looking for against the foot of stone, or is it against the shed?
Against the shed.
So, the stone, it's already a measurement, right?
Well, no, that's, that's just one, like, sure, he wasn't adding that into it.
And we do have a properly noted public hearing, properly advertised.
Was there any correspondence?
No cor, no written correspondence came in, but I think we do have one person here as a result.
Do you want to speak? Yes, I just came in Florida, and he's my neighbor, in my favor.
And your name is, and what is it?
So, I might forget. Bill Elder, and I have 161 Redmond Road.
Now, just for, are you on the near side where the shed's going to be, is that your house?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, you're the one right at the next door, no?
Yes.
You're the one most impacted.
So, when you have a problem, you can put it right in the... We talked about it.
Well, we like neighbors like you. I said, we like neighbors, long, because you went a little more out of bounds.
And of course, I get a good neighbor, Ben. Thank you.
We have talked about, we do see that, but I don't know if that's it, if it's going to come up?
No, it's, it's going to be in the first draft, that's for sure. Because it, it, it causes, I think, a lot of problems, that it's, it's hard to justify, let's put it that way.
The fact that if you have such a big setback, which checks, which, which...
Overdue, currently?
Any other questions from the board?
So, is that the extent of the public hearing? You want to close it? Yes?
I think we'll close it, I don't think we have any more to speak on. So, let's close the public hearing. And I'm going to review the requirements, okay? You've already filled out the form. I think that my new form is very nice, it has all the criteria and that.
That's the, that's the idea.
So, the first requirement is, a district application setting natural requirements as well as specific practical difficulties. We talked about the fact that we're not...
Well, there's some difficulty.
Yeah.
There's some difficulty in the law of travel, and the trees and everything. It's not 100% difficult, it's a fair amount.
And while I'm not trying to just say, well, you bought it, you used it, I don't think I'd do it with law and good faith. We're going to decide by dying, that's...
No.
Next one is how substantial the required variance is in relation to the requirements. We're looking at a 32% relief. We don't really have one standard for being substantial, but we've talked about 50%, anything over 50% we'd come accept. So, it falls within that range, but that's, that's a pretty old standard, we've been using that for forever. But, you know, it is, it is substantial, but it's, it's not huge. The next is that the difficulty can be alleviated by some practical methods feasible for the applicant to pursue. We discussed this in some, you know, that there are some limitations, terms, notice that, you know, in terms of the lot. And I also think, you know, in terms of locating to somewhere else, your point that you want to be able to use your snowblower, have your snowblower in the shed makes a lot of sense.
Absolutely, you don't want to have a shed 150 feet in bed area.
Place you want, that's true. So, I see you want a shed, because you already have it. I mean, and you can move it closer, I don't think you can move it closer to your house and still have adequate space to move it through there. I think your argument that you want to have good space between your shed and house is, is okay, you know, it's, it's not unreasonable, and, yeah, so... The next is that there will be no substantial change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to the property. I don't think so, the neighbor doesn't think so, I don't know, I disagree with the answer you're stating. The next is that the condition is that the variance may be materially detrimental to the purchase factor or to property in the district, and this property is located or otherwise conflicted with the description or purpose of the district or the objective of the plan or policy. And then, the very few questions, minimum grants which would alleviate the specific practical difficulty by the summing up was to affect the application. We did explore the application on the possibility of alternative locations, if we could satisfy that. And, and I, I feel, you know, the fact that the person who would, you know, in terms of alternatives, it's good that it's back away from the, the, it's not right against the...
Yeah, absolutely.
That's good, too. And, I, I don't see, since that's the case, I mean, when you look at it, it's not going to look against your neighborhood, it's not going to, I think it's going to be acceptable.
It, it, it seems to me, from my perspective, this comes down to, you know, the applicant has expressed some desire for the location, you know, that are based upon his preferences, you know, to live in his home, you know, snowblowing, that kind of thing. And that needs to be weighed against the detriment to the neighborhood, you know, is, is there a, is there a detriment to the relief requested? And, and in weighing those two things, and I'm not saying there's not alternative locations, and you technically could put it, you know, at the 15 foot mark, you could.
Well, I don't, I don't think that...
But he's, he's expressed some desire not to do that, and that should be weighed against, what is the detriment of shifting at that five feet?
Right, but we also have to weigh the fact, it's an R2 district, it is a 15 foot setback, which is ample space, and it moves, in fact, to, within the setback, he still has almost 15 feet to his act, unless you're too driven, as you still have two 12 feet wide. So, this can be alleviated, so, the sharing is rare, five feet period, that we go after every time, the same five, and in far as I'm concerned, two of them weren't really met. Number one, strict application would result in specified practical difficulty. I disagree, I think 12 foot is more than ample to drive through, more than ample to blow snow. And then also, on number three, the difficulty cannot be alleviated by some other practical means. We've all discussed that's absolutely possible, so we can alleviate this without breaking the, without the... If this can be alleviated, and I feel it can be solved, without changing the code, the R2 district is the sound of this area for a reason, R1 is a 10 foot setback, this is R2. And I don't like the idea of setting the precedence that we're going to change the R2 to a 10 foot for sheds in this year. Right now, we have rules, we have five criteria, I still need to complete the three out of five, to me, as a really quite passing threshold, in my opinion personally. Because again, we literally still have 14 feet between the building and the house, it's not going to be two foot against it, he has a capability to drive a truck through there, and Kevin would drive a truck on it, and I didn't have a...
Well, I haven't, I don't think that, I don't think that he ever, the vehicles, but I think, first off, I don't think we're setting precedent, we've done a set precedent with, when we ran there. It's not setting precedent, it's each variance that comes before the board is based on what is presented for that group. I think you have made points that are reasonable, but I also feel that you also have to take into consideration what the person that holds the property demands, and what is going to make them, you know, they have to be able to compromise.
And in terms of fairness in that, I think, you, the issue though, also is, it does look like a size of a lot.
And then, the rules are the rules. And if you do it in this case, you know, it's not precedent, but it becomes an expectation. And that's my own reservation, I, I understand what you're saying, we review these, the purpose of this board is to review these situations on a case by case basis. But, this is my heading to point is, you know, I completely understand, Jim's been there, you've been there, in your property. If, if you're telling me that it would require a significant amount of tree work and excavation, that's a practical consideration. To me, the distance from the house doesn't seem like, if you moved it back, it would be a huge, you know, it would be a significant issue or a challenge, detriment, but it's, it's a case by case basis type of thing, so, to your point, I see both sides.
I mean, I, I think that we could be, I guess, it depends on how, how each of us interpret what our roles. I mean, if we wanted to stick right to, we, you know, the letter of the code, and that's the law, and that's the way it is, you know, we can do that.
Well, no, I think you're right, David, the, the point is to look at case by case basis. And we have many times in this board, because if you read the law, if there's a practical difficulty, again, Justin, we just said the last one, we had one with difficulty with cost and strength, which is questionable, but we, you know, we know for those as case by case basis. I guess for me, it's the distance that you can actually need to require it. You can need to require it, and still have room between the two, that's what's me, I'm finding the hardship. When there's a hardship, I'll be somewhat lenient on that, to be honest with you, because kind of a part of our job is to make those compromises. But in this instance, I, I'm not feeling, I'm not feeling the hardship particularly, so, I mean, that's just my, that's what we're looking at right now, basically, when we're presenting this.
Well, we can feel a lot moving it over, what you did to the ground.
I submitted the variance just to, you know, have the cushion of the 19 feet versus the 14 feet. I mean, it just seems to be, because you can never predict the future, so, I mean, it's more of, just trying to look ahead, and also with the elevation of the area that I'm putting it in, I really don't want to do a lot of ex-estimation and more work, or more expense that I have to do.
My understanding of not just our role, but to stay, you know, to stay, oh, I mean, this is a area variance, it's so much easier for an applicant to prove need for than their use term. If the criteria are there, they don't have to necessarily meet all the criteria that they, you know, that they see. It is a way, you know, the benefit versus the benefits the applicant loses, that you remember. Martin offered to talk about that. This is all Martin. We used our term to...
No, Martin, that's, that's...
But he, but that's, you know, that's my, it's not a strict interpretation.
Martin, you know, broke up, you took it. And I, I think he...
You know what you're saying, you just could be, you could actually get, you know, you could break a feedback.
Well, you can move it back, early, if it freezes down, and put it back in there, I mean, that's... But I, I think that he, I think he's made a reasonable, in my book, and I mean, in relation to their feelings, in my book, my feelings gave a reasonable request, and the reason why is that he wants to have headlights to rule through the house and the shed, I understand that. I don't feel like, it certainly, if we, if we were to grant this, and it's 10 foot off the line, if you drive down Redmond Road, you're not going to, that's kind of a spec, you'll never notice it, you'll never know that that is 10 foot off the line. And does that impact the neighborhood at all? The neighbor that's next door is totally in favor of it. And I feel like, you know, I think he's made a reasonable request, I think you want to have snow over there, and you want to have all the extra roof in that house. I mean, we did discuss upgrading something through the vents, not necessarily the full reason why it's there, there's a little bit of a difference in the elevations, it makes it work where you want to put it. I mean, I, I really don't feel like it's that, that much advanced, I really don't.
It does seem that you're concerned about that, having that space, do you, and you've mentioned down the road, do you foresee at some point having to have machines, equipment in there to develop any of that land, or to clear any of it, or anything?
No, I mean, you know, not at this time, no.
But is that, part of your reasoning is for wanting that, that additional space between the house?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, it's more of, you know, an access issue to, you know, make sure that, I just, you know...
If a situation arose, you needed to do something, or wanted to do something with that down the road, you wouldn't have to relocate your shed?
Yes.
And you've also said that you throw the snow over that way?
Yes, some of this, yes.
So, you would ask it, so that would be a larger, both of those, that area, it would be more problematic for someone to go with it, so... You know, I...
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I don't know if this will make a difference, I mean, of us sitting here, or you, but you're looking for five, five feet, really?
Yes.
If it was offered to you to split that, would you, would that lower our percentage of relief? Would that be something that might be a compromise to you?
Yeah, I guess, you know, the 33% is asking too much, I mean, I guess...
The percentage is not always the, the factor here, you know, you have a lot of different options, and comments, and thoughts, I just was brainstorming, sitting here, listening, didn't know if that was something that you would be willing to, to do.
Yeah, I definitely would prefer five feet, just for, you know, like I said, as far as peace of mind, and, you know, making sure to predict the future as far as, you know, getting back behind the house, doing whatever.
The other, the other aspect of this struck me when I... The other, the other aspect of this that struck me when I was there was, um, and I, I know this on my own yard, because I have two sheds on my yard. Once you place the building, that is an effective demarcation or it, it establishes place, is my point. So once the shed goes in, that dimension on the other side, whether it be 10 feet or 15 feet, it's for all practical purposes, it's going to be rendered useless. I mean, you, you're just not going to go over there.
Is there a view?
You know, he has the entrance, yeah, I believe you have a, a side entrance on that side of the house, correct? So the point is, you know, your yard is essentially going to be that space between the house and the shed.
Right, that's what you want to have in your yard.
I, I understand it's his property on the other side, but I know, like with my two sheds, the area on the other side of those sheds is no man's land. Once it's built, I never go back there. So, um, you know, for whatever that's worth to, I, you know. You know, I understand about the accessway and all that, but, you know, if he wants to put a patio out there someday, you know, between the house and the shed, you know, this is a place he bought in the joy's yard. You know, that yard now width is going to be reduced by that amount. You know, where, where the shed lines is, ends is gonna, it's going to limit the practical use of that line.
Yeah. And I think that's a valid point. I think it's reasonable.
Those are all valid points. As far as looking forward, in one, one situation I could envision is if somebody else bought a house, it wasn't you. And that person was really, they, for whatever reason, they thought it was too close. You know, who knows what the future holds in that regard? And I just think, you know, to Max's point, it's, there are other alternatives, but I see your point and I, you know, I, I totally understand what you're saying too. I mean, if you don't want to look at it as though it was me, but if it was me, I, Jim said, if you want to put a patio there or something. I mean, your reasons are your reasons. So I understand that.
And I don't think anybody, they can't challenge your question. I remember they said questioning. They certainly couldn't challenge if somebody bought a house.
Well, that, that's, that's.
It's just like when this guy built this house, in truth, he couldn't say anything about that.
I mean, fair enough, as, as long as that's, you know, I think you just want to.
If the side setback for this property is still 15 feet, we're just getting.
We're there in leave on that one thing, right there.
So, I mean, it is, I mean, it's sort of a precedent. Send somebody else to come and say, well, we did this for this guy. Which is a likely moment, you know. It's different. It's, it really is, it really is weighing that, that detriment versus the community versus the applicant.
Every applicant that comes into the office who happens to want to discuss with me, you know, there, I, I say, the, you know, this is not precedent. The board looks at these on a case-by-case basis on their own, on the own, on the individual merits of the application.
We've had, we've had, it's, it's, we have to base it on, we've had the house, the property for the, the side setback.
And I think that, you know, if, if this ever came a legal issue on, you know, for, you know, various, for whatever, I'm not saying on this application, but in the future, you look at the records and the minutes since I've been here, I've seen each and every deliberation and it has been on its individual merits. There is, you know, there's no looking back to another case and because we did it there, we're going to do it here. That's never discussed.
Well, I mean, that's, wouldn't you maybe even consider it?
Let's comfort it. You're in the house right across the entrance from Beverly, right?
That is correct.
Everything behind you, both.
Now, now to Scott's point, you know, I do think, you know, he's done that in the past too. If you can't find consensus on the amount requested, you know, would, would 11 work? Would 12 work or, you know, some number in between the request and the requirement?
We, we would, if, if. The exit for five foot, we, if we reduce three foot, it's still, we take a two feet away from what he wants. If we reduce the three foot with that requirement, to me, the number that's either, it would be 20% would help reduce the, reduce the number of questions. It's going to be, and still, so that's one thing, that's why we need to keep it back. It's still really a pretty good setback.
You know, I did bring up a good point about, you know, the space between the shed and the fences, you know, just. Use was kind of what was said.
Oh, I agree. I agree.
Well, then by the access that you're looking for, would you prefer an access, even if it's 15 foot off, 15 foot's whole? Got to be around buildings there. That's why I'm 15 foot.
Well, there are some uses of providing access to 25, I'm concerned. Access to the back here and that's, and with the, um, stuff like that, it's just. Now, apparently they had a road, but the animal says, I think it's not that a large deal because I think he's got a lot of land and drives up the back and trees that, you know, I think his use of it, where he runs that, it's not going to be a, it's really not asking for a lot. I, I mean, I, I personally feel like this is something that we shouldn't be able to do more.
I have to agree. I think, I think a 10-foot setback between that shed and property line is just, is just fine with that neighborhood, I'm sorry. The fact that the neighbor's house is, is set forward from this house makes it even less comfortable.
Neighbor is in support of it, so.
I, I, I don't know if you want to.
I guess we can, any further discussion, or will do we enter a motion to discuss?
Did you discuss it till? You get that, dogs.
I will make a motion if we approve the area, areas for appeal under 840 as requested.
And also.
And we would include the conditions that we discussed. Are the motion. Remember, not conditions.
Justification.
Justification.
Yeah, there are no conditions, right?
No, no, because of this, okay. Well, the only one I'll check is because it's a shed, not true. Is it considered still the same rules that assess your building on site? So it's 15 foot, 10 foot, there has to be from drainage.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And I explained that to him. It's measured from the edge of the eve. Yeah, it's not the wall of the, so if it's a one or two foot eve on the shed, it's measured from the edge of the eve.
The rest of the leaves, so any part of that structure has to be.
That's why I'm going to come down like a center.
Yeah, yeah.
Any further discussion? Okay, would you call a board, please?
I would love to.
If you do that, I'm sorry. There's no need for secret, right, Jim?
No, that's correct. And I would acknowledge that, in, in the record, that this is a type two action.
Matthew Manning?
I go Bell.
Scotty Kusimics?
Yes.
Gerhard Endel?
Yes.
Kevin Ells?
Yes.
Justin Farrell?
Yes. They're approved. You can, you can put in for your billing. Just make sure you show that setback on your building permit plot plan. Just make sure you, make sure you show that setback on your building permit plot plan. The 10-foot from the eve. Right?
Thank you for your time.
No, thank you.
It's an extra copy I put in at my office. Hey, that's real. You've got a couple of stragglers still over there. Do I have all your vouchers?
I haven't taken it off yet. I'll be ready later. I love that.